To start with, I'm going to ask Girl Scout Troop 50548 from Field School to lead us in the pledge. Ladies, right up here where we discussed.
(laughing).
Say it loud, let's go.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. I also will let council know that we held a meeting earlier this evening, the Girl Scouts and I, and they passed a law where all Girl Scouts at Field School get extra ice cream for a week.
(laughing).
And it's a law, so the parents, if they have an issue, can call me. Okay, Clerk Spencer, I ask that you call the roll.
Wagner.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
York, absent. Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent, we have a quorum on with the agenda. Agenda item two, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit to council at this time? Submit to Clerk Spencer, please raise your hand if you have any written communication. Seeing none, we're going to move on to public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the city council on any issue they so choose. Out of respect for the work we have to get done here this evening, and of respect for other folks who may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. When you're identified to speak, we ask that you go over to that microphone over there next to Chief Ruth and start by, since we are recording, we ask that you start by identifying yourself to the audience, or I'm sorry, to the council. And then your three minutes will start. If you go over three minutes, I'll give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who's signed up for public forum?
Yes. John Scudder, American Legion, Elmhurst.
My name is John Scudder, Elmhurst, American Legion. And the reason I'm here tonight is to thank the city council for all their backing and everything that they've done with us and their support. It's greatly appreciated. Some of the things that we wish to accomplish, and we're on a steady roll to do it, is next Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, is our annual Let's Feed the Troops. So we'll be bringing down recruits from Great Lakes Naval Training Center to a full-blown turkey dinner, everything else that they want, computers, cell phones to call home, and all the sweets they can eat because they can't get them up at boot camp. Last year, we checked the phones, and the three furthest were a young lady from Guam, a young man from a small town in Alaska, and another young lady from a very small island in the Hawaiian chain. So these are the young people that like to do something with their life, and they'll travel up to 6,000 miles to do it. We have on our agenda the sponsorship of several baseball teams, softball teams, in the Elmhurst area. Also, we'd like to sponsor an Explorer Post, a Boy Scout troop, and a Cub Scout pack. As a matter of fact, one of our members and his father and his brother are members of the Post. He's stationed overseas in Rota, Spain. His name is Jack Daniels. He's a chief petty officer, about ready to receive a direct commission. He'll be one of 19 that'll do that with the Navy this year. He has a Cub Scout pack that we are going to sponsor, and part of the sponsorship will be PAC 182, Rota, Spain, sponsored by THB Post 187, Elmhurst, Illinois. That will give us an international reach. One thing I didn't mention about Thanksgiving is that we're going to have a reporter down there from the base newspaper, and this has a circulation up there of about 3,000 to 4,000 people, plus it goes online. This means just about any Navy base, ship at sea, we'll be able to pull it up. So Elmhurst will be prominently mentioned again in an international type of a situation. So that's basically what I have. We're on our way, and the reason we're on our way is the support we've received from the city council in the city of Elmhurst. Thank you very much.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. Last week, fans said that the city of Elmhurst is going to attempt to borrow $27 million from the EPA for improvements in the sewage plant. Over the years of coming here, public works has endlessly asked for funding to improve, replace the sewage treatment plant. What happened to all that money? Why are we now faced with $27 million or greater? Industrial drive has come up. It's in this hearing for the night. Improvements in streets, improvements in sidewalks. Will the businesses along industrial by be assessed as homeowners are to have sidewalks put in? Or is that just a freebie? Yes, indeed. It'll be interesting about industrial drive. TIF 2. Funding is being transferred from TIF 2 to TIF 5. That will also include all the deficits of TIF 2, right? The last TIF meeting I was at, there wasn't one TIF in this town that did not have a deficit of better than $600,000. So I assume that the deficit of TIF 2 will also go to TIF 5. It ought to go to a TIF meeting. It's rather fascinating. One other thing, there's a ordinance on here about gas line repair. In all the years I worked in construction, utilities were very, very funny about touching gas lines, utility lines of any type. What do we hire in a firm for? Emergencies? It's a utility. I had to pay for damaging utilities. And they didn't bring in somebody. They showed up themselves. It's expensive. But here again, a no-bid contract. Even a homeowner putting up a fence will ask for more than one bid. This council has endlessly, lately, avoided the issue of bids.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
And it costs me money.
Ben Silver, 182 North York Street.
Good evening. My name's Ben Silver, and I am a community lawyer with Citizen Advocacy Center at 182 North York. CAC is a nonpartisan, nonprofit legal organization with over two decades' experience, helping citizens engage in and monitor local to government in Elmhurst and DuPage County. I'm speaking tonight in the hope of receiving clarification from the city council regarding a concern over TIF 5. Item 5.8 on tonight's consent agenda highlights the problem. The description for that item includes the following passage. Prior to utilizing the TIF 2 funds on redevelopment project located within the TIF 2 district, the city became aware of an offer being made by another municipality that would move the Elmhurst BMW dealership out of Elmhurst due to expansion requirements. During this process, the parcel adjacent to the Elmhurst BMW dealership property became available, and based on discussions between Elmhurst BMW and the city, the city agreed to match the incentive offered by the neighboring community. I'm concerned about the timeline of this discussion and agreement. I believe this concern has been raised previously by Elmhurst residents at meetings of this body, and has also been relayed to us at CAC. It can also be illustrated by the fact that I think the first meeting where we heard about that here was May 9th, and the BMW dealership had already purchased the old Gerber property prior to that. The agenda description and the timing of council action beg the question as to when promises of incentives were made to the BMW dealer. I want to make sure, and I hope the council agrees, that both the public and aldermen have the ability to review and comment on decisions like this before they have too much momentum for dissent to matter. There should be an opportunity for meaningful deliberation. I hope the public and myself can gain a better understanding of the timeline and make sure that the cart was not put before the horse. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing more about the TIF 5 process.
That is it who signed up for public forum, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that's it for public forum for those who hadn't signed in. At this time, is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet at the back of the room but wishes to address council at this time? Please raise your hand so I can see how many people. Seeing no additional people, that will conclude public forum. Any announcements? Agenda item four, announcements from the dais. Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, my friend and colleague Alderman Wagner talked about Matt O'Toole, Matt Toole, I'm sorry, the O was added, and the fight he is dealing with ALS. We are working on a fundraiser to help Matt and his family, and I actually have the raffles here tonight if anyone wants to buy one. They're $25 each. It is for a Chicago Bulls Sky Box on December 26th, where there will be 14 tickets, four parking passes, a $500 food and beverage credit, and a signed Bulls jersey for the winner to take home. Tickets are available in several spots around town, including Elmhurst Camera, Riley's, and Fresh Start Cafe. But if you buy them from me, me and my family are matching one ticket, so you get two for the price of one, basically. So if anyone's interested, let me know. Otherwise, if you see them around town, please buy some. For anyone that knows anyone that's going through this process with ALS, it's brutal. It's 24-by-7 care, and it's extremely expensive. So there's a lot of folks in town trying to help the Toole family out. So I wanted to highlight that for anyone that's interested and make people aware. The raffle drawing, I believe, is on December 5th. You do not need to be present to win, and that is my first announcement.
Okay.
The second, I have a second, sorry.
The floor is yours.
It's a little bit more fun.
All right.
Tonight is one of our own's birthday, and I was notified earlier today that I should highlight that Alderman Kennedy is celebrating his birthday today. So I don't know if we should sing to him or clap. I can't sing, so I'm not going to sing.
I don't, I'm, as chairman, I'm foregoing the singing.
(laughing) Thank you.
Just for the record, happy birthday, Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm done, thank you.
Appreciate that. Well, hey, well, there you go. Any other announcements? Any other birthday announcements?
(laughing).
Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you. Not a birthday, but I would like to announce that on Wednesday, November 30th, the city of Elmhurst is holding a public hearing about the design alternative for the metro station. It will be at 7:00 PM at council chambers.
Okay. Any announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go on to consent agenda. At this time, is there any of them on the consent agenda that any alderman wishes to have removed? Vote no or provide comment. Alderman Bram.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Three of them, 5.6, 5.8, 5.14.
5.6, 5.8, 5.14. Any other items to be removed? Alderman Mulliner.
5.5.
Okay. Any other items to be removed? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 5.5, 5.6, 5.8, and 5.14. Motion approved, consent agenda minus those items. Motion by Alderman Bram, second by Alderman Levin. Clerk Spencer.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York, absent.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus items 5.5, 5.6, 5.8, 5.14. Onto agenda item 5.5. Clerk Spencer, I would ask you to read the referral.
Okay, it's a referral. Meeting leadership in absence of the mayor, Alderman York and Healy. There is a recommendation.
Sorry, what was that, Patty?
There is a recommendation action.
Yeah, but that's not coming out of committee yet.
Okay.
Did you read, did you read the, why don't you read for the record just the cover letter by Alderman, by the manager, Grabowski? Do you have that?
That is the recommended action.
Is that the recommend, okay, I have that. It is respectfully requested per the attached request from Alderman Healy and York to amend the Elmhurst Municipal Code regarding meter leadership, meeting leadership in absence of the mayor. Be referred to the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee for review and recommendation back to the council. Signed by James A. Grabowski.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion on this, I will remind council that this is a referral, which is very limited in its debate, the ability to debate. It's debatable as to instructions given to committee and to the advisability of commitment, which is just what they're asking to do. So it's pretty straightforward if there's comments as it relates to instructions to committee, which I think is pretty clear in this. I guess that we can discuss that, but I'm reminding council that before we put this before the council. So to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the referral as read by Clerk Spencer. Motion by Alderman Healy, second. Second by Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Healy. It's a referral. Okay. Alderman Mulliner, you pulled this.
No comment. I just have the right to vote no on something.
Yep, okay. Any additional comments? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to call the roll, call the vote.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
No.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
No.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, two nays, wait a minute, 10, I'm sorry, 10 ayes, two nays, and two absent.
10 ayes, two nays, motion carries. Referral is approved to go to committee. Onto agenda item 5.6. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read, read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the city council approved the purchase of one underground stormwater vault from Storm Trap LLC of Morris, Illinois, in the amount of $627,056, and that the city attorney prepared the appropriate resolution. Signed by Jim Kennedy, Chairman, Marty Deuter, Vice Chairman, unsigned by Michael Bram, Patrick Wagner.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a report to, as the title states, put a storm trap system in on Washington Street. It allows us to be able to do three acre feet of storage. That is an increase above the ability for us to do it as an open area or as a regular detention area. There's a very high water table in that area, so for, in order for us to get the storage volume required, we needed to go to this type of a solution. So I believe Alderman Bram had some questions or reason to pull it, so I would defer for any other comments.
Okay. Alderman Bram, Alderman Wagner.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let the council know that I wasn't present for this meeting. Had I been, I would have voted for the report.
Okay.
I support it.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My statements tonight are to make sure they go on record publicly, because we did have a thorough debate on this last committee meeting, and the only reason why I wanted to pull it was to explain the rationale of no signature on this report. First and foremost, for the record, I want to say that I do believe in providing stormwater management in these lots. That's why I was also voting yes to purchase these lots for stormwater management on Washington Street. It is severely needed to have stormwater detention, or retention, sorry, in this area. So I am wholeheartedly supportive of stormwater retention in the area. The reason why I didn't sign the report, I'll get to in a second. When we went out for a statement of qualifications for Washington Street detention, it stated, and this is verbatim per that report from Clark Dietz, "The benefit of using underground storage for most of the flood control is the ability to propose a solution that will be acceptable to the neighborhood. We all know that placement of an eight-foot-deep basin in the middle of this block will elicit intense opposition. Instead, we are seeking to create a relatively benign depression that our residents will not be threatened about. This way, our residents can believe that this basin is going to reduce their flood risk and all pain that comes with flooding. Ironically, we can bring more peace of mind if we offer a shallow pond to our residents." This is verbatim, and I quoted, "per the statement of qualifications from Clark Dietz. I have concerns over how deeply," no pun intended, "that we actually looked into doing an open-air retention basin like we did in every other area. The reason for that is that exact statement in the statement of qualifications. But what it comes down to when rubber meets the road, it's dollars and cents. As Alderman Kennedy just mentioned, that the storm trap would allow us to have three acre feet for this area, and I agree with that. Open-air detention would allow us for 2.57 acre feet, so less than a half acre foot difference." And someone, some would argue, and have argued, "Any inch that we can get is beneficial." And I also agree with that, but as Alderman Dunn has mentioned in past discussions on stormwater retention, it comes at a cost. This cost to do storm trap in this area is approximately, and we didn't have the exact numbers on that day, a 30% to 35% increase. So we're talking approximately $350,000 increase. And I had to ask myself, is that appropriate? A $350,000 approximate, because there was no exact numbers the day of committee, increase for the .43 additional acre feet. And I will remind you that the other area that will be serving this is Bryan, Madison, Madison, was proposed at five acre feet, and now today, we're estimating that we will be getting out six acre feet out of that retention area. So again, I get the, I get the thought process of anything we can do, the better, but it comes at a price. A 30% increase is too much, and that is my argument of not signing this report. 30%. We're not talking 5% increase, we're not talking 10%. We're talking a 30% increase, and I would even argue that it's even more, because according to our own stormwater retention status reports, the budget for this area is $1 million, and now it's $1.1 million. And that is just for the construction cost. So the dollars and cents keep going up. I think it is suffice to do open-air detention and leave it at that. I do know that there was a petition by the neighborhood, and I would agree, if I was living near it, I would petition as well to get the storm trap in there. I'm not debating that, but we have to look at this holistically. We didn't do this on Geneva. We didn't put that underground. They have to live next to an open-air retention. We didn't do it anywhere else. So why are we willing to sacrifice approximately $350,000 or 30% increase for this location?
Okay, any other comments?
I have a comment.
Alderman Hanquist.
I would just like it known for the record that I think the residents of that block would have a hold of China if it got rid of the water. So whatever the report said, I don't think the neighborhood was fighting against any sort of stormwater detention or voting to have any sort of different type of stormwater detention than what was decided on, number one. And number two, even a small additional amount of relief on that block, if you've been there, would save quite a few homes, very small amounts of water, anything we can save over there. It's probably one of the worst areas in town, so I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. The alderman stated that there was an increase in storage in another project within the location that services the same homes. Is that true? And could someone please provide me the actual numbers of storage, both sites?
Well, as it relates to the Bryan project, I'm sorry, the Madison project, as you'll recall, the Madison project was originally to lower the soccer field that's to the south of Madison. But when the city, when we took a closer look, brilliant minds disagree on whose idea it was. But somebody came up with a great idea that Adams, I think, runs to the south of Madison, and that block is like the only block in Elmhurst that isn't just packed with infrastructure and pipes and everything else. So the city was actually able to expand footprint of that soccer field, if you will, to the south, and we went from five acre feet to six acre feet at the Madison area. And this one, I think it was, was it about two acre feet or 1.4 acre feet increase to three?
If we did a shallow pond, yes, that's correct.
Does that answer your question? So it was about 1.6, I want to say, and it went up to three by digging this thing out at the Washington location.
Yep, and then at the, at the Washington, no, at the Madison.
Yep.
Location, sorry.
Madison went from five to six. Washington went from about one and a half to three, or 1.6 to three.
Okay.
Ish.
Okay. And then I had a follow-up question. When we made the decision to purchase the properties, did we know, did we have any preliminary engineering that would indicate that we had a water, a high water table at that, at any of those properties?
If I could, we had some idea from builders in the area that there was a higher water table at that area. We didn't know exactly how high it was, and so we did some testing after that and talking to the engineer and how to come up with this design.
Was that before or after we purchased the property, the additional work?
That was after we purchased the property.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in terms of the need for this area, if we go back to the original Burke plan, Burke proposed 23 acre feet at York Commons. Part of that was to serve the Crescent Cambridge area. The other part of it was to serve the Washington area. As, you know, the project that we have there now will be 11 acre feet instead of the 23 that were proposed, and benefits only the Crescent Cambridge area. So... So, you know, the Washington area is where we're falling short, and I think to pick up as much storage as we can in the Washington-Madison area, you know, it is an area where we're stretching to get as much relief as possible.
Additional comments? Alderman Kennedy, then I'll go to Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to highlight, even with the additional six acre feet at Madison and the three on Washington, there are between 15 and 20 homes that would still have water against their foundation during a 100-year storm. So even though it doesn't seem like it's a lot going from 2.57 to three, it's significant. And with these two projects, we're dropping the water level a foot in a major storm. If anybody's been down Washington during one of these storms, it's not good. And to take a foot of water out of there is a big deal. And we're going to still need to do some things in that area, be it additional storage, or the infrastructure projects, or individual home floodproofing, to be able to meet the goal that we're not going to put water against people's foundations when it should stay in the public right away. So this is the right project to do. It's the right project for this area. It's, gets us to the maximum amount of water that we can store in this area. We're not trying to spend money foolishly. We're trying to spend it in the most logical manner. And for us to get the storage we need, this is a solution that has been proposed and that I support. Thank you.
Alderman Bram?
Alderman Dunn hasn't spoken.
Oh, thanks. Alderman Bram, Alderman Dunn.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just some follow-up clarification questions. I, I heard the mayor say something about the original design concept on Washington was about 1.6 acre feet, but I, I think I just heard Chairman Kennedy say 2.7. So just some clarification on that. We're adding .4 acre feet. And what is the additional cost just for this addition of .4 acre feet compared to the original design concept?
Want to take a swing at that, Alderman Kennedy?
I will, but I'll also defer to Alderman, or Alderman, excuse me, City Manager Grabowski about this. I don't recall that originally what that number was, because there's been a lot of time since that started. I will tell you that the, the increase in cost on the storm trap, I believe, was in the neighborhood of $200,000 or so to get to the point of where we are today. There was additional engineering that was required along the way to get to that point. And that's as much as I recall. City Manager Grabowski, do you have more information on that?
Regarding the, the difference in, in size, I believe what Alderman Kennedy was referring to was just a different design that the engineers came up with. And then when they came up with the storm trap design, we were able to get to the three, three acre feet. I believe that's, that was the discrepancy.
And I, let me state that at the time we were having the discussions of the projects, and Alderman Toledo already brought up a question, but it kind of highlights, we obviously don't do full-blown engineering until we own the property on any of these projects. So, you know, my recollection at the time when we were purchasing these, purchasing these products, products, purchasing these properties, that we were hoping to get about one and a half acre feet initially out of that. But the decision hadn't been made and hadn't been reviewed by committee yet. How deep? What's the expense of digging a larger hole? If there's any underground storage, that kind of thing. So it's, it's a little bit of an estimate until it gets to the stage we're at now where we have full-blown engineering.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. First, I want to start off with a clarification. It, it seemed like it was interpreted by some up here that I was saying that the residents were against retention in this area. I never said that. I said there was a petition out there for doing the storm trap for this retention area. That has been stated by city staff in our last committee meeting. So that is all I've said. I never said that anybody on this block or in this general area would be against stormwater retention, because that's absolutely not true. And that word, that was not my words up at the dais here tonight. I, I, I'm a little bit confused on why there's asking for clarification. In the committee meeting, it was clearly stated that the cost was minimum 30% increase, and they approximated about $350,000 plus or minus. They didn't have the, the data with them. And the increase from where we were going into this was from 2.57 in my notes to three acre feet. In regards to the project as a whole, and I made comments on this already, but it seems there's misunderstanding of my previous comments. I mean, I believe that every inch counts. I truly do, but it's also at what point and where you spend your money, where you spend your dollars. Alderman Kennedy just made mention of the infrastructure project for this area. And I think that is something that, you know, we're, we are evaluating, but maybe that's where you spend the money. But here's what it comes down to, and my statements were to make sure it goes on record, because this is a very important issue to me, and I believe every single Alderman on this dais. I wanted it in the record. The problem is, is even though I don't think we should spend the money, 30% increase, $350,000, and we should spend it elsewhere, where the report is, I don't want to vote no and jeopardize this not moving forward and causing delays in this project for these residents. So that's why I started my comments was with, I want this on the record. I am going to vote yes for this, even though I think we're spending, we're not spending the dollars wisely. I think that we should have taken a serious look and moved forward with an open-air retention area, just like any other part in town. Regards to the schedule, we did do, I think Alderman Toledo already made mention, of geotechnical work. That was done according to our schedule. And I lost it. I want to say back in April, but don't quote me on that, because I don't have, oh, here it is, June of this year. Now, I'm not 100% sure what geotechnical includes, and I don't know why geotechnical would have a difference from what a builder says. But it, my understanding of geotechnical would be soil samples, and we should have known it from there. City staff did clarify during our discussions in committee that that gives you an idea, but it doesn't give you exactly what the water level is. The water level is significantly higher in this location. It's somewhere in my notes, I want to say it was at between six and eight feet versus, I believe, closer to 16 on average in some of the other sites. But again, it's all about how we spend our money and getting the most bang for our buck. And the only reason why I'm moving forward is because I want to see progress in this area for these individuals.
Any other comments? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to highlight something. From the geotechnical standpoint, we wouldn't normally take somebody's word for it as to where we think the water table might be. That's why we hire engineers and to find out critical pieces of information like that. Yes, builders know what's going on, but those three homes weren't built any time in the last, oh, 50 or 60 years. So I don't think there's a builder qualified out there that would tell us that. Just a point of clarification, this is a detention project, not retention. I think the residents of, of Washington have already retained enough water. It's in their basements, and they'd tell you that. So just to clarify, it's a detention project to keep water out of people's basements. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Alderman Healy?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I recall when we discussed buying these properties that several comments were made in, in executive session that we should grab the property and build, dig the hole as deep as we can. This project allows us to do that, store more water. Alderman Deuter's point is a great one. If we had been able to do everything we want to do at York Commons, this project may, in fact, may not even be necessary. But unfortunately, that didn't come to pass. We're spending more money here than we would have anyway, because we couldn't do York Commons. The fact that this storm trap system lets us go deeper, keeps more water out of people's homes in arguably the hardest-hit area in Elmhurst, I don't believe there's any harder-hit areas. There might be areas that are hit as hard, but nobody is harder hit than those folks on Washington. This is a slam dunk.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Mullenar?
I just have to say that I would believe that Spring and Jackson is probably pretty darned close to this spot. I just want to make that clear.
Any other comments? Attempted to call a voice vote. No, that's okay. Clerk Spencer?
Wagner?
Hi.
Mullenar?
Hi.
Deuter?
Hi.
Sabatino, absent. Leader?
Hi.
Dunn?
Hi.
Bram?
Hi.
Lumsky?
Hi.
York, absent. Toledo?
Hi.
Healy?
Hi.
Levin?
Hi.
Kennedy?
Hi.
Hanquist?
Hi.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
All ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Onto Agenda Item 5.8. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the city council authorize the transfer porting of funds of approximately $3 million in 2016, and all subsequent funds approximately $450,000 to be collected in 2017 from the Lake Street Development Fund, TIF 2, to the Church Road Lake Street Redevelopment Fund, TIF 5. These funds will be used for TIF-eligible costs, including land acquisition improvements for the redevelopment of the Elmhurst BMW dealership within TIF 5, signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Bob Dunn, Vice Chairman, Noel Toledo, and Mark Sabatino.
Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Dunn, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report stems from the fact that the, back in, six months ago, we were, the city was looking at this area of the city for development. Right now, we have TIF 2 up around Lake Street, which is expiring at the end of the year. And looked at the merits of establishing another TIF in that area that particular area of the city continues to be in need of development. And we had the Joint Review Board back in the summertime evaluated and reviewed the merits of TIF 5 and, and voted unanimously to, to proceed with that. This particular, the report references the, the direction to port funds from TIF 2 to TIF 5, the remaining balance that's in TIF 2, plus the additional increment that is estimated to be left from the 2016 tax. And that was our plan all along since this project inception. This particular project is vital to that cap, that corridor. And as we all know, the car dealerships in Elmhurst are, are very critical to our revenues in the city and the viability of the city. So this became a very important project to, to move forward with. So this particular effort will help, this particular project will help kickstart that TIF 5 and help us hit the ground running.
Okay. Any comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before this meeting, I, I spoke with Alderman Dunn in regards to my concerns. My concerns on this stem from the fact that the recommendation is tying the transfer of funds to a particular project we have not publicly discussed nor voted on. The recommendation should only be, as the subject of the report states, a transfer from TIF 2 to TIF 5. It is inappropriate of us to make a recommendation and therefore commit this council or a future council to how we will use these funds. Quite honestly, I, I think some of the comments already made were out of order from a standpoint of we shouldn't be discussing the BMW dealership request at all when we're talking about a referral to transfer funds. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to modify, because I am in full support of the transfer, but not tying us, which I don't even know if it's legal, tying us to a particular request from a particular dealership. So my motion would be to amend the recommendation, the last sentence, to allow it to say, "These funds will be used for TIF-eligible costs, comma, including land acquisitions slash improvements for the redevelopment of TIF 5." No mention and no recommendation of what project the fund should be utilized for.
Okay, Alderman Bram, just so I make sure I have this right, I'm looking at the report. Under the recommendation you're proposing, these funds will be used for the, for TIF-eligible costs, including land acquisition slash improvements for the redevelopment of TIF 5.
Correct.
Striking the Elmhurst BMW dealership within.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the recommendation portion of this report. Second?
Second by Alderman Mullenar.
Okay. Well, we'll continue the debate. This will be on the motion to amend, but it crosses, crosses over, so I'll allow leeway if people meander in their comments. But we are now, we have a motion and a second to amend the recommendation, which is allowable, because it's not substantially changing, to remove the wording that Alderman Bram mentioned.
Alderman Mullenar?
I second it up because I'd like to get the attorney's opinion on this, whether or not we can have that in the recommendation.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to get the opinion from the attorney, whether or not it's appropriate to have the BMW in it.
I think it is.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. I just wanted to get that, know the answer to that. So, thank you.
Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another question for our attorney.
Go ahead.
I want to make sure Mr. Starino is listening. I, I believe that this is the case based on our committee discussion, but I just wanted to clarify, since we're here with you, that the way that the recommendation is written and the way that it'll transfer into an ordinance, especially the last sentence saying that these funds will be used for TIF-eligible costs, including, from a legal perspective, that doesn't mean that it has to be that particular entity.
Does not.
It does not require that it has to be used for that particular entity. It's just using that as an example for, with, of a business or property within that TIF. Is that correct?
I would agree with that, yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Levin?
Well, I, I think I understand Alderman Bram's concern, but, and I think it's more specific. It says it will be used for this dealership, but this is not, I don't really have a problem with it, because that is our intent, and if something were to change, then we would change what we're going, we would change the, we would not enter into the agreement with the BMW dealership to use it. So I think it's appropriate the way it is, and it actually gives some information about why we're moving it over. I'm not sure it makes that much difference, but I am comfortable with that phrase as it stands.
Okay, additional comments? Alderman Deuter?
Just one other question for our city attorney. Does the state TIF statute allow you to port for any reason, or do we have to specify how you would use it?
You don't need to specify a reason.
Doesn't need to specify.
Yeah, and when I answered Alderman Mullenar, I wasn't speaking to the, to whether or not this should be done. I was just speaking to whether you could do it, and it was appropriate, and it was appropriate to do it, whether or not council ought to do it or not. Change the language is up to the council. But Alderman Deuter, you don't, it's not necessary.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. I mean, I, I guess it depends on the person reading and the interpretation of the English language. Thank you. I mean, I guess it depends on the person reading and the interpretation of the English language. I read it to be inclusive. Some may not. If it doesn't add any value, as the city attorney, I don't know if you said that, or maybe I'm taking that that's implied, then why have it in there? Why even cause any doubt whatsoever? Using a particular project as an example is fine, but not in the recommendation. I mean, to me, this commits us to it. I don't know how it's going to be written in the ordinance, but as Alderman Levin just stated, you know, it's our intent to utilize those funds. Well, things could change. We could use those funds maybe for a stormwater project in that area. I mean, just because our, what our intent is today doesn't mean our intent is going to be when this project comes to fruition. So I stand by the motion, you know, if it doesn't add value, then why leave it in there?
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Dunn?
I would just like to add, follow up with what Alderman Bram mentioned. I think it does add value because it, in the interest of clarity and transparency, that is our plan, our intent is to move forward with that project. And there's no need to cloudy the waters. That's what our intent is right now.
Okay. All right. Additional comments? All right, I'm going to ask for Clerk Spencer to call for a vote on the motion to amend, which is to remove the words in the last sentence of the recommendation to strike the words after the word of "the" Elmhurst BMW dealership within. That's a motion before us to strike those words. Okay, Clerk Spencer, please call a roll.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Nope.
Levin.
No.
Kennedy.
Nope.
Hanquist.
Nope.
One aye, eleven nays, two absents.
One aye, eleven nays. Motion to amend fails onto the original motion, which is to approve the report and recommendation as is. Continued conversation. Clerk Spencer.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 5.8 is approved. Onto 5.14, which is ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending Section 44.74 entitled Yield Right-of-Way Streets and Section 44.92 entitled Stop Intersections enumerated of Chapter 44 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Elmhurst Municipal Code.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Healy, second by Alderman Palmski. Alderman Healy, any comments?
It's the ordinance for the stop signs we agreed or we approved from the report a couple weeks ago.
Okay. Alderman Bram, you pulled this, I believe.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we discussed these. I did fail to mention one item during that discussion, and I want to highlight this because I think it's important. But before doing so, I'll just remind everybody that the approval of this moving forward is utilizing information from an article from the 90s superseding the federal document of the MUTCD, the Manual Uniform of Traffic Control Devices. And that's the reference, and that's the basis of the argument, from what I understood two weeks ago, to move forward with stop signs that are not warranted per the MUTCD. In the, in my quest to make sure I look at all data points, I've made a request to get the traffic crash reports for this particular intersection. While doing so, technically according to the MUTCD that we're supposed to be honoring, we're supposed to be looking at our right-angle collisions preventable by this proposed traffic control device. According to the police reports for each, the cause codes for each for Kenmore and Marion, disregarding the yield sign, failing to yield right-of-way, failing to yield right-of-way, failing to yield right-of-way, so essentially ignoring the yield sign. For Longdale and Marion, disregarding the yield sign, vision obscured, and failing to yield right-of-way. So it doesn't matter what sign is there, if the drivers that, according to the traffic reports, caused the accident, if they're not following the devices up there, then it doesn't matter what we have, if it's a stop sign or yield sign or no sign. They need to follow the basic rules of the road. And some of the reports in the descriptions, you know, it did make mention of potential visual issues with construction equipment, landscaping. There were some concerns on two of them, of a hit and, two that were a hit-and-run. So you got to wonder and got to ponder on why that driver kept on going, or those drivers. So I don't think it has anything to do with the merits of a yield becoming a stop sign here. It doesn't meet MUTCD criteria, as we, as I discussed in two weeks ago. We're utilizing a nine, somewhere in the 90s, I want to say 93, 95 report from Paul Box to justify the number of accidents is valid for this intersection to have stop signs. I believe in recent weeks, the landscaping that was causing some visual issues with the yield sign at one of these intersections has now been trimmed back. So I don't see any validation, no matter how hard I dig to try to validate that there is a necessity for stop signs here. Our own City of Elmhurst Police Department reports show that they're ignoring the signs. So how is that going to be any better, probably even worse, if you put a stop sign up there and they're ignoring the stop sign instead of the yield signs? According to MUTCD, from my take on it, it doesn't meet the warrants. According to our own traffic, crash reports from the police department, it's people not even following the rules of the road and just blowing through and not even considering the yield sign. So I can't support this.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Palmski?
Thank you, Mayor. For me, the validity lies in the fact that this was recommended by a traffic engineer who holds the credentials of professional traffic operations engineer, as well as our own city engineers. So there's documentation that they pointed to, and they are the experts in studying this and making recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Bram?
Just to clarify, the documentation that was just referred to was the 1993 or 95 document. It never made it in the MUTCD that the City of Elmhurst has adopted and we're supposed to be following. So let's just say 1995, that article was written. Twenty-one years later, those points are not in a federal Illinois or document that the City of Elmhurst utilizes, but we're superseding the federal document to an article.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmski.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nays, two absents.
Eleven ayes, one nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 5.4 is approved. Onto Agenda Item 6. Reports and recommendations. 6.1, Mayor Morley, that is me. Just a reminder to all, we have a budget meeting after this meeting, so we're trying to get through this as quickly as possible. Couple of things to report. We had a SOC meeting. I think all people know who that is, suburban O'Hare Commission. We are a member. This is one of those groups that is involved in O'Hare and the noise. SOC was originally created for, create opposition for Western O'Hare access, and that's kind of fallen by the wayside now. They've kind of taken this up as a cause. SOC issued a, had a presentation and a press release at their most recent meeting last Friday, I think on the 18th. In general, it was a, it was kind of a self-promoting favorable position on the runway rotation at O'Hare. Elmhurst, as council will recall, we have a seat at the table, and we are maintaining that seat at the table so we can continue to voice our opposition. We voiced our opposition, written opposition, and we also voiced it verbally at the meeting. As I mentioned in our last meeting, we do have an upcoming meeting with the Chicago Department of Aviation. That's going to be this Wednesday. City Grabowski and I, City Grabowski, it's not even 8:30, I got issues. City, City Manager Grabowski and I will be attending that meeting. And then as we previously reported to council, we will come back with more of a comprehensive report as it relates to O'Hare and the noise. Couple other announcements. City Center, I'm jumping out of order, but City Center has a tree lighting for, everybody out there, City Center has a tree lighting this Saturday from 5:00 to 7:00. It's at City Center Plaza where the, is the tree up yet?
Yes.
Tree's already up, okay. Where the fountain used to be, but the tree is up. Hopefully Santa has been in contact with Chief Freeman. Usually he arranges to arrive on a city fire truck. So that is the tree lighting. We also have Elmhurst's very own Turkey Trot. It is the 33rd Annual Turkey Trot, I believe. That is Thanksgiving Day. If you go to dan gibbons turkey trot dot com, you can get all of the information, including race day schedule. And the race day schedule, you can register day of events, but the actual event kicks off at 9:00. But get there early. If you haven't registered, you can register online. Bear with me. I don't want to miss anything. Happy to announce that the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the City of Elmhurst the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our comprehensive annual financial report. I want to put Joe Newton on notice. That's our 27th year of doing that. We're one short of Joe Newton's record. I'm not sure it really falls in the same category, but very proud of our finance group, Tom Trizine and everybody for that. Finally, I have a couple other things, but seeing as how we're running out of time, I am going to, the last thing I'll say is Elmhurst Police are doing a drug takeback project on December 3rd. And if you go to our main city website, it is one of the top two or three events that's listed there. It's takeback on December 3rd. It's at the west parking lot at the Elmhurst Police Department from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's it for me. City Manager Grabowski?
Thank you. Three items tonight. First, just a reminder, reminder that we will be closed Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving. On Saturday, though, we will have staff working with, I believe it's the SCARES group, doing the cooking oil recycling at the Public Works Garage. That's Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 for anybody who has oil that they would like to get rid of in an environmentally conscious way. And then the last item is annually, we hold the Joint Review Board meetings for the TIF districts that we have. We are scheduling that for December 12th. The letters went out today. A number of the aldermen are on those. So that'll be December 12th, Monday evening, 6:00 PM. I think you know how it goes. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me or Tom Trizine about that.
Okay, any other reports from the dais? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to the public work staff. On Saturday, Alderman Hanquist and I were out on Washington Street to be part of the open house that was held for the improvements that we talked about as related to the storm trap. They did it onsite. It was a little windy, had a tent. There were a lot of, there was a good amount of participation from the neighborhood, and I think it might be a way to handle these things in the future, to do it right out in the area where the improvements are taking place. So, thank you.
Alderman Bram?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions in regards to your report on SOC. First statement, I guess, I'm no surprised that Elmhurst is one of the outliers, if you will, when it comes to the rotation program, considering that the members of SOC are Addison, Bensonville, DuPage County, Elk Grove Village, Elk Grove Township, Elmhurst, Hanover Park, Itasca, Roselle, Wooddale, and Shiller Park, which would get relief if we continue with the Share the Noise program. My questions, oh, for you, are just two, is, you know, how did Elmhurst voice their concerns or their objection? Was there a vote taken in regards to the rotation program? And then the second question, is there minutes from this meeting that are publicized? Because I don't even see a SOC website anymore, at least that I can find.
I'll ask City Manager Grabowski to respond to that. He's the one who attended on Elmhurst behalf.
The way that SOC works, there will be minutes from the meeting that will be issued at the next meeting, and I don't have that date offhand as to when that is. Regarding the press release, there was an email sent out about midweek last week from the mayor of Elk Grove Village, who is the chairman of SOC, with this release attached to it. We reviewed it, mayor and I reviewed it. I emailed the SOC members to let them know that Elmhurst could not support this and that we object to the program and that we will not be part of the release. So if you look at the latest release, and I haven't sent that out, I, we can do that. Elmhurst's name is not on the letterhead for that. There was not a vote taken. It was more just, if you have any objections, let us know. The question now is, is SOC going to make a formal recommendation to the ONCC? There was, there was no discussion of that or vote taken at the SOC meeting for a formal endorsement to continue this. It was, this release was going to be sent to the ONCC, and there's a subcommittee of the ONCC that's meeting on the runway rotation plan. Presumably, they will, they will get this.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item 7. 7.1 is an ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
An ordinance waiving bid for the 2016 WWRF Emergency Gas Line Repair Project and authorizing the execution of a contract between Dom Mechanical Industries, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst. See Item 5.7.
Okay. To put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the report that we approved on the consent agenda, it allowed us to suspend the rules, and that's therefore the reason why this is on as a ordinance tonight.
Okay. Comments or questions? Seeing none, Clerk Spencer?
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
York, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absents.
Twelve ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 7.1 is approved. Onto other business. Any other business? Alderman Healy?
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about Washington Street earlier tonight, and the city, this council, staff have made tremendous progress with stormwater projects hitting, affecting most of the hardest-hit areas in town, whether it's Washington, Geneva, Pine, Crescent, et cetera. One area of town that we still haven't addressed because it's going to take a long, a longer period of time is the Swain and Sailor area. Can I, can we get a formal update at the next city council meeting on where we are at with the county, where that's at from an engineering standpoint, just, just a general update? As, as these projects have become more visible and we're putting signs up and everybody's happy, it's led to some questions by the people in the Swain and Sailor area saying, "That's great, what about us?" So I'd like to provide them some, some responses.
Okay. Any other business? Alderman Mulliner?
I'm going to tag on to that and ask for an update so that we can make sure that the area in the 7th Ward, they're aware of all the issues there, going from Prospect Parkside area all the way down to the Spring and Jackson area. Thank you.
Okay. Any other business? We, before I ask for motion adjourned, we're going to meet in five minutes for budget. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Wagner, second by Alderman Healy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. See you back in five minutes.